Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of January 27, 2021. It's about 6:10. We're going to call the meeting to order and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Town Administrator Weekly Update. Have a yo ready?
The first thing I want to go over to you, just in the public meeting, I know that we did call each one of you on Monday because this was deemed an emergency based on the information we received. The notice that's posted downstairs, it says effective immediately, temporary changes to the Land Use Department. Until further notice, anyone needing services from the Land Use Code Enforcement offices must check in with the Town Clerk's office first. To ensure compliance, all entrances to the Land Use Code Enforcement will remain locked. Code Enforcement Officer is available by appointment only. To schedule, please contact the Secretary. The office will be closed on Wednesdays. Board of Selectmen estimates these temporary changes to be for approximately three weeks. We appreciate your patience during the process. So we just wanted to go on record because we did get a couple of calls. This is derived from a safety concern, and we're not going to divulge any more information, but that is the reason. It has nothing to do with anybody else or-
Right, just a safety reason.
-fine words of control we are to hear around town. It's a safety personnel issue.
Okay.
So, CEO interviews, per your instruction, have been scheduled for tomorrow. First one's at 5 o'clock. You will be interviewing five people.
How far apart do you have them spread out? Is there a time or-
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, okay.
I figured if you wanted to do a second round, we should have narrowed it down.
That's what we typically do anyways.
Yeah, it's what you've done in the past, but anything's possible. Next, I just want to let you know about some ZBA notices. So we have been assisting downstairs, and we have mailed out all the ZBA notices, certified mail. Cheryl's been working to assist the secretarial work downstairs. So two notices that went out. There is the hearing. There's a new one that came in that's scheduled on February 16 at 1 o'clock via Zoom. That's for an administrative appeal submitted by Dennis Chantelnet. And then the other one that you knew about, I think, was the Saturday, February 27 at 12 o'clock, and that is the Brady's Lake Improvement Association. So kudos for Cheryl to get all those butters and certifies out in such a short amount of time. Our next one is just, I sent you guys an email today letting you know that Michelle and I attended a webinar today, which was HR During COVID. It was quite informational, and there was a lot of stuff really that the Selectmen should see and hear. So I've emailed you the presentation so you could review it. That was two days ago. Today, Kayla and I attended a webinar regarding 38 town meeting elections, and a lot, again, a lot of talk about, you know, we're still in the middle of COVID, what rules are still in place. You know, we know we have people that are expired on committees, what duties, what can they still do, what can't they do. A lot about warrant fundamentals, and just a good recap. Most all of the March town meeting towns have switched to secret ballots. They're not real hopeful for June. But we'll see what happens as the governor continues to put her executive orders in place. John from O'Donnell's is coming down on Friday, Big Boss. Yep, so we sent him an email saying that we were starting to get a little piled up with stuff. So he's going to be here on Friday to help us out. One of the things that Code Enforcement Land Use do is they apparently notify CMP often when it comes to turning power on or off when things get approved. It's not something I get involved in, but we did try to send something across, and because the two employees that had authorization no longer had it, I had to put something together on, since we're no longer with the town, and the email didn't come from one of them, they requested something on Town Letterhead. So I sent something, you know, please be advised that Ken Paul and Brendan Sharland are no longer employees of the town. Attached, please find a certificate of appointment for Michael Gilmet, as our new Code Enforcement Officer duly signed by the Board of Selectmen, sworn in by the clerk. Mr. Gilpatrick should be authorized by CMP as the former employees were. So just sent a letter with his appointment to make sure that he could get those things done on behalf of the town. Last thing, short and sweet this week, is I wanted to, you have this underneath your agenda. Last week, we talked about the numbers and what they really meant in this email from May Municipal, and Michelle and I went to talk about it, and I showed her, remember last week, it was like listed down this way, and I'm showing her, and I said, I just want to make sure this is this, and apparently the original email came in in this nice chart form. So you can see now the estimated insurable value, which is always higher because they base our insurance value on what it would cost to replace it, and then the present value. So the number that you see handwritten all the way to the right is the number that the town has it assessed at currently. So I guess we need to kind of go through them and see if you have any concerns. So the schoolhouse, and the town's value, and that affects our overall numbers, but certainly the town doesn't pay taxes on their own buildings, so it's not like we're over assessing it. But the town has a schoolhouse at $39,000. You can see that replaceable, they only feel like it's 28. The next one is a big jump, the storage building.
Why is there such a-
Well, so that's the Mary Grant Building. May Municipal, the assessors have it at $4,800 for that Mary Grant Building. May Municipal's saying it would take $28,000 to replace it. Let's see, then the new Sand and Salt Building, and then they have the storage building. They have them at the same address, so it's really hard to, they don't, Trio doesn't separate them out, but those numbers are pretty comparable. That one's the Town Library and Building, so they're figuring it'd be $1 million to replace it. Building's valued at $806, but the assessors have it at $335. That seems like a big jump. And then the last one, which is the storage building, you can't really use, take this number into consideration because that $616,000 is everything at 1727 Route 109. So that's going to include the fire station. So this is more just in FYI. I'm going to let John look at it when he's here on Friday, see if he has any concerns. But it's really the replaceable number that you're most concerned with. Do you think that you could replace those buildings for those numbers there? We have until February 5, and I have no knowledge in the construction building, so can't help you.
You're going to have John look at these, right?
I may have John look at them. I don't know. I mean, he must have some building insight. Got a couple of, you know, we could reach out to a couple of contractors in town.
Okay.
David, you see buildings going up all the time. Those numbers look reasonable as far as what it would take to rebuild it. I mean, the schoolhouse, you're never going to get back at that, you know, you're never going to get the value-
Yeah, the schoolhouse, it doesn't make a lot of sense. The schoolhouse has almost got the same value as the Mary Grant Building. And they're both the same size, they're both old, to replace them both, I would think would be-
Well, they are. They're only $400 off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I would think that'd be more, way more, I would think. I mean, $28,000 isn't a lot of money. But the Salt Sand Shed, they get a value of pretty much what we paid to have it built back in, well, how long has that been? Six, seven years? So, I mean, it's close. Yeah.
Storage building?
The storage building, see, that's a little blue building. $49,000 doesn't sound nearly enough for that.
Doesn't?
I wouldn't know. I mean, price lumber nowadays, and to build a building, you don't get nothing for $49,000 anymore. But we'll have him look at it and-
What's your storage building?
All right, well, so I'll reach out to John, see what he thinks, and tell anybody else that wants to give input. I mean, I'll, that's all you got?
Warrants and bills I know I signed, David signed. Did you notice if I did come in?
No.
I didn't notice that he didn't-
All right. So I just need a motion, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, approve the agenda.
I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Table the minutes for the last meeting.
Actually, I've got them, and I went through them. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of, let me get the date here, the January 20th Selectmen Meetings Minutes. Right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right, so that's done. Do you have any department heads or committee chair updates?
Thank you, Ms. Congresswoman. We had our meeting last night. We went over the application for Article 43 for Eagle Road. Mr. Lewis did bring in a letter from Amanda Pratt from DEP, which I was very pleased that he was able to expedite that. All of his documents, all of the documents are in order, and the committee voted to recommend that you allocate $3,000 to Eagle Road. And he sent you a copy of the letter.
I was just going to say, Leslie, do you by chance have a copy of that letter?
If I have it with me, when I get home, I'll email it.
So if the Board, when we get to it, chooses to motion, you know, take that recommendation and if you can just put in, you know, with the-
Stipulation that we get.
Stipulation that we get, not necessarily from you, but from him or somebody, just so it's in there.
Yeah, no, I thought about it when I got here that I didn't bring it.
Yeah, well, that's, we're not on you, but at least you got it.
But I have it. I'll forward it to all of you guys, so you have it for your file.
Thank you.
We had some bridge discussions with the new administration. We understand that they are looking at doing a lot of infrastructure grants perhaps. So the road committee would like to make a move and getting ready in case these do come down. So we had a couple of questions. Canal Bridge, we wondered what the status was at this point. Is there a warrant article going on in the town meeting for Florida?
We haven't talked about it. I mean-
So as of now, the budgets are due February 1, so the Board hasn't even considered, we haven't started drafting them at all. But I can put it on the list for them to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, we've been talking about this for years and years.
We were supposed to have a meeting with the Wakefield-
Right, and I mean, I don't know if that's the right way to go. I mean, we've got a lot of work to do on our end. I mean, I know you know that.
Canal is the one that the gentleman came over to try to share.
Yep. But we, either way, we should be thinking about at least asking the town to put some money aside, so if we, you know-
Sort of reserve fund.
Right.
I'll put it on their radar for the warrant discussions.
Yeah, and also, if there's meetings with anyone, the road committee is tasked with responsibility for bridges, so I believe that we should be included in those conversations.
I think we should ask him to come back. I mean, I don't know how you felt-
We can have it right here at this-
Yeah, the warrant discussions would be here.
We have it right here at a Selectmen's meeting anyways, so you're more welcome.
Right, but, you know, keep it on the agenda and stuff if we had the one from Wakefield come back, you know.
Is that something you want me to schedule and help? So if budgets are due the first, the ordinances are due. I know the warrant finances sometime in March, I think is the date. We really want to think about getting him here, the second week of February or so.
We are getting him as soon as we can.
Yeah, yeah, at least we can talk with him and see where-
See if they're still up for it, make sure they're still on board or before-
So we're going to shoot for February 10 to get him on the agenda?
I think you're going to find that there's going to be-
Information, I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, because I'll make sure that I'm here if I know they're on the agenda.
Okay, we'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Pam Wigan.
We also talked about Roe Bridge.
Oh, hold, I'm sorry. She wanted that. She said something about the bridge.
Yeah, just let me say, I just wanted to say something about the bridge. Pam Robinson, Pam Wigan, she's head of the-
The Service Society, yes.
Yes, and she's the one that's mainly running the bridges. And this-
You got it, right?
You got it, yeah. And anyhow, she wasn't involved in this plan, but now she's involved with it, so I don't know what's going to happen.
That's why we have to meet with the Selectmen.
Right, yeah.
Because we're not sure that she supported the plan that came before the town.
Right, she felt that the bridge that he had picked was not going to work for going over that historical bridge and-
So I'll go through the chair, and I don't know if it's him or not, I'll have to look up who it was, but we want to invite the full board to discuss it?
I would think the full board would be the way to go.
And I don't think she's back yet from Florida, but she had asked to, I told her she could watch it.
That's up to-
And that's, I told her, I said, you can just watch it, you know, if they come, I said, just keep looking and-
But that's up to the Select Board of Wakefield, whether or not she has to be here or not.
Yeah.
It's pretty much a discussion-
What is her job?
She's-
She's the historical, she's the one that-
She's the one, I'll put it all in historical list in the first place.
Exactly, yeah. So, yep. So just so you know.
If she sends any documentation, if you can just forward that to us.
Yep, definitely.
We talked about Roe Bridge, and we talked about this, I think, for, you know, the past couple of meetings we had. We passed along the engineering report that we had done to Adam, so he could see what had been proposed. We also had a conversation, I don't think this meeting, but the prior one, yet maybe a solution such as what was proposed for Canal might be feasible. So we need to do some research on that. One thing that the committee thought would be advantageous is to, it is still to sit down with HEB, who did the initial report, talk to them why they proposed what they proposed, and if they had any alternatives because of the permitting issues that we're involved in, and the smaller towns involving that. So the road committee is asking for a meeting with HEB.
Okay.
Is there something on the Board, I mean, if they're still elected committee, but are you guys okay with us scheduling that?
Yeah, I think-
I'm thinking that maybe Zoom might work best for them. Zoom may work best for them?
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
I think we are all through, you know.
Yeah, we could all, if it's on Zoom, that's good. We could all jump in.
That's when you guys are all available.
Yep, so that would be good.
And which one, is there one that you're hoping to, so Canal, it sounds like you may be considering money this year's warrant.
I think Canal, right now, what we've got to do is we've got to meet with the Selectmen from Wakefield first, make sure they're still on board, you know.
So Canal takes precedence over the HEB meeting?
Low bridges for the HEB.
Which one is more important to you right now that we get done sooner?
Well, we've already figured out that on the 15th, we're going to try to schedule a meeting with the Selectmen.
The 10th, yeah.
10th, okay.
And then obviously-
They can have a meeting with HEB. I mean, that's not any money, I mean, you just want to talk to them and see, you know, yeah.
And they had told me at one point they'd be happy to meet with us at any time to discuss it.
Okay, yeah. So I wonder if, do you think Pat Smith should be asked to come to one of these? He runs the Milton Highway Department.
Well, I think-
Or eventually, I'm just-
I think probably what we ought to do is do the same idea as what we're doing with Wakefield for some reason, is the people are going to appropriate, the money's not going to be Pat. He can ask for it, but-
Right, but I just, yeah.
They're the ones who are going to have to put it forward. And if they want to bring Pat along, that'd probably be a good idea, but I think we probably ought to speak to the Select Board over there.
Okay, all right.
And see what-
Just, you know, so they're on board too, if down the road, because I don't know where, I mean, we don't know where they're at.
Yeah. The last one I knew was 2026.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't believe that that's a priority for them.
No, no, I don't think so.
For our problem, even though after the bridge belongs to them.
Exactly.
And then we talked about West Shore Drive and also New Bridge.
Culverts?
The Culvert, yes. In looking at when the-
So New Bridge?
New Bridge, yeah. We talked about this a couple of years ago, and then could never get it together to file for a grant.
You're talking about the big culvert there, it comes out of Wilson.
Along with Warner Wilson.
So she's talking about both of them, because she said two roads, I don't know if you've heard her.
Yeah, West Shore Drive.
West Shore Drive, yeah.
So those, we're looking at doing, when the stream crossing grants open up again, hopefully in September, we're looking to pursue-
The road was just paved, right? New Bridge, New Bridge Road was just paved correctly?
It was just paved, yes.
They have to come up for the culvert in Brazil?
Yeah, they'd have to cut it, yeah. That's why we were trying to, last year, get the culvert, try to, before they tied, but it's just the way it goes.
That was with the bridges. So then we talked about the RSMS, and-
Did you hear the update from last week?
That someone was coming in to do a training.
Yeah, so we spoke over the phone, and we walked through, she walked me through some things, and obviously the reports and stuff, and you and I had talked about you coming in maybe sometime and seeing what I saw, so we haven't done that yet. But she walked me through a bunch of reports and stuff. She actually sent me some manuals that we got just this week. We have missing information that we need to have kind of pulled together from, that probably the road guys can just answer. But she was talking about a training in March.
Okay.
But anytime you're ready, let's schedule something. I want you to be able to see what we see when you log in and some of the missing information and figure out where we go. So because if we can get as much of that in there before she comes in March, she's going to be able to, you know, show us a lot more.
I mean, I still have a lot of, I still have the hard copies from when we did the survey the last time.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, there's, I mean, just a couple of roads that, let's say, might not have the distance. There's a couple of roads missing altogether, just little things that I'm sure some housekeeping we can-
And I mean, if it's something that I don't have on the hard copy, we can always go out and get it.
Yeah, and that's what I figured, so, yep. Whenever you want to come in, we can, we'll figure something out, and you can look at it with me.
And we also talked about perhaps that the more efficient way to input the road commissioners' data when they repair the roads is to actually, when they come in, fill out, to file their paperwork, they actually sit down and do it. On that way, it, you know, it's more productive, takes care.
Do they know that?
And also, it's less room for error.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, you know, the road commissioners, God love them, a lot of times they email their payroll and stuff in, and we don't see them at all. Sometimes, you know, they leave it in the box. As long as they're okay with it-
It was discussed at the meeting, right?
Yeah, we talked about it.
Oh, so they were both there?
They were both there.
Yeah. That was your understanding. Were you guys are on board with that?
Hey, we love it. Yeah, that's-
That'd be great.
And that's why when, you know, we just have to find the, we've got to get all the empty blanks filled in, and then we'll, you know, get the, figure out exactly what you want to input, and then find the starting point. I mean, we're going to obviously go forward starting whatever date, and at some point with downtime, try to go backwards, at least in that fiscal year. So we have, you know what I mean? Start keeping up with it.
So we just thought that that would be the approach, how you're doing.
We have an absolute place that they could sit and enter it. That would be fine.
Well, the person doing the work should be doing, plugging it in in the first place. They know what they've done.
Right, yep.
I would think.
I mean, then, I mean, once the data's put in, the program just spits out the report.
Right, nice.
Classes, we're still looking to hopefully have classes, and I just wanted to just double check and make sure that if we are able to set up something, I mean, I know that erosion control, both road commissioners need, I'm sure other people in town might like to do that. So I just wanted to make sure before we start doing something, you know, reaching out to people, that if something like that was able to be held, we would be able to have it here at all.
So as I recall it, the last, the last direction from the Board was that as long as it was a town-related committee, that you were okay with that. Is that still the fact? My numbers are kind of-
Long as there's not too many.
Yeah, we'd have to limit it, but I think we'd be fine.
Yeah, it's not, I don't think-
Well, I mean, the class, the class that I took, which was a long time ago, I mean, I don't know how long it's been, but this place is full, so.
When I took it, there was only like five.
So-
So we would have to limit it. We'll count them out.
Yeah, you can do that. It's no different than, I think, the boat courses that we've had here. They only limit so many people anyways to those, so we can do the same thing with that.
Snow and ice class, he wanted 10 people.
Right. Yeah, and we could hold more than that. We can place the chairs out and count and give you a number of them.
So I didn't want to start that process before, you know, without clarifying that we would be able to do that. And there were also a couple other items that the road committee took a vote on. There's, the committee would like to see two separate articles going on in front of the people this year, one of them being a warrant article, which is, and these are off the road commissioners' budgets.
Separate from you mean?
Separate, yes.
Yeah, okay.
For crack sealing the town roads.
We're doing what?
Crack sealing the town roads.
Do you have a number that you're ready to?
I don't know.
No, okay.
I mean, this just came up last night, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. I even have a chance to talk to the road commissioners, to see that, you know, who we would even contact to get-
Estimate, yeah.
So, and the other warrant article that we'd like to see is that we have a lot of elderly people in town who have trouble driving at night, and fog lines for the roads to make it easier.
I can't, I can't hear you. Guy, lines?
Fog, yeah.
Fog?
Fog lines.
The white ones on the side?
Yeah.
I mean, the masks aren't supposed to affect your hearing.
They do.
The fog white lines on the side.
White lines on the side of the road.
Fog lines, white lines, yeah.
I'm not an idiot. I'm used to being able to read people's lips, so I can, okay, got it.
So the warrant article will be to fund it or to-
It would have to be, to do both.
It would have to be to fund it, yeah. And that's another thing, I haven't, I haven't checked with road commissioners to see, you know, like I said, it was something that just came up last night.
Right, so you'd get back with us.
So budgets are due.
No, that's been made as to what the cost might be.
When does the budget do?
February 1.
February 1, we-
We have a little bit of leeway, not to the department heads. I mean, a little bit of leeway.
That's why I'm trying to, I wanted to let you know tonight that this is something that we were looking at. And if we, if we run out of time, you know, we run past the deadline and it can't be put on this year, it's something that-
But they should be, you know, right, they haven't passed on their budgets yet.
Right.
That's just something they should be able just to include into their budget.
Well-
I think that they don't want, from the, what-
They want it separate.
The thing was that we have so much that needs to be done to the roads that we don't want to dedicate something like that to their budget, you know?
Have it as a special project or-
The thought that I heard too was that, because it's more coming from the road committee, they didn't want that road commissioners' budgets going up if it's something that the road committee is trying to move forward.
So you want the road committee to put forward this, these articles instead of the road commissioners? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no.
Well, no, well, the road committee is supporting it. We don't want, we didn't want it in the road commissioner's budget. We wanted it to be a separate article funded by a separate line of coal, so it doesn't affect their budgets.
Gotcha.
The road committee is asking, not the road commissioners, so.
You should be two, you should have two articles, honestly, to do that.
Well, that's what she said.
Two, Sean, two.
Just for that one, just for the stripe in itself.
Well, one, yeah, to see the town-
One is the crack sealing, the other is the fog lights.
What I'm saying, for just, just for the lining, because what happens-
You need to?
Because what happens is when you start putting lines on a road, you have to continue it.
Okay, so that's something we need to-
So what happens is if we turn around and say we put stripes down H Road, and then they don't get maintained and get done.
Okay, so you'd want-
Okay, so I think what you ought to do is put forward an article to, whether or not to stripe our roads first. Then if, yay, then you put your second article for cost.
The only, if I can interject, the only, the only issue that I have with that is that if they say yes, that they want to put the fog lights on, but no, they don't fund it, you have a problem of doing what the voters want.
Shouldn't you ask to-
Problem is, is if you don't agree to have it done, okay, and then, say you put forward the money, okay, and it doesn't get maintained, then what happens? We're liable on that thing, okay? So at some point there, you have to have an agreement that it wants to be done, and then now it's something we have to do. Nothing's saying we have to do it. We just put money and say, well, okay, it's there, okay? But nothing's saying we have to do it from three years down the road.
Well, so would it be, could we do something, you know, to see if the town will raise and appropriate $50,000 for fog lights on all townways or something like that? And then each year, you just have like a maintenance article to, I mean, if they don't fund it the following year, you know, like the gym, they just don't fund it and they don't get repainted. I mean, what are you going to do?
You wouldn't have to repaint it every year.
Right, so it'd be over how many years?
It'd be every, what, three, four? Well, I mean, I don't know.
I honestly believe the road commissioners should be putting forward that article themselves. We can, we can separate the article. The road commissioners could put forward that article because they're the ones responsible for doing it.
Right.
Will you want to weigh in on this?
Well, and we can, you can talk about the logistics of it.
Right.
Are you and Adam both there?
I am still going with the cracks. I'm not for that right now at all. We know we're close to being able to start doing that. We're going to continue some paving. I mean, last night, the fog lights were just brought up. This is the first time we've talked about it, and that is my thing, because, you know, the minute we put them down, we've got to maintain them after. So, you know, putting it through is, you know, I budget our own article, I mean.
So you don't agree with putting them forward? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not, those two, not this year. I mean, I'd be willing to look at it. I mean, we got to the end of the week, you know, a budget that's a lot of money. I mean, I'd be willing to look at it, I mean, right, we got to the end of the week, you know, a budget that's a lot of money.
Right, so that's maybe why she was coming forward, I mean, if-
Yeah, well, so if he, if, the problem I see with this is, say we have two, say we got one road commission, I don't know about the second one.
We know-
We're not for that right now, but then we put one forward from the road committee and the money gets funded, that means he has to do it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean-
So it's kind of backdooring the road commissioner.
So they're on, they're on the committee too, so they, they were-
Well, I understand that, you know, but if they voted for it at the committee and then say, I don't want it, that would look kind of funny, wouldn't it?
Is it that you don't want it or you're not- Is it that you don't want it or you're not ready?
We're not, just not ready.
I mean, you have some roads that you've tied that could be crack sealed, I mean, not every single road, but aren't there some roads that, that you could get done this year?
There are some of them, but I don't want it, you know, if I can't put that on a separate article, it's coming out of-
Well, no, he's saying you put it on a separate article.
Yes, we would put it on a separate article, definitely.
He can go on a separate article, he just wants to make sure the support is-
My question is, do you feel that the money that would be absorbed in the crack sealing and striping, you could use in your regular budget doing something else?
Yeah, we probably could use it something, we could probably use it somewhere, right?
That's more needy than that?
Probably not, not right now, that's, that's-
No, you're not understanding the question. Say we put, um, the article and say it's, uh, $50,000 for crack sealing, okay? Do you feel that the $50,000 for crack sealing could be better used on a road project, getting roads ready for pavement or this and that, or?
No, I'd rather take the $50,000 to get a road ready to pave.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, would you rather have more money in your budget?
I, I think with, you know, with the crack sealing, you know, maybe a couple more years, we can talk about the crack sealing then. That's, that was always my understanding, you know, when it always came up, you know? And the fog, and the fog striping just came up last night, and I wasn't, and I'm, you know, not, not, not right now, so, that's how I feel about it.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay.
Um, so, that's, um-
Maybe.
So I'll work on the two meetings and keep you posted and I'll make the note up for further discussion for those warrant articles as we get more involved.
Okay, great, thank you.
And since the budget was mentioned, and the treasurer has only received, um, two budgets so far, so we really need that February 1st deadline.
All right, any other department heads or committee chairs that have anything to say? No? All right, we'll move on to old business, A, letter of no action update.
So I'm hoping that after David's update, based on your meeting with the CEO last week, that this can come off the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we met with the, um, the two individuals from, uh, 10th Street, uh, with our, um, part-time CEO. And, uh, during the workshop the other night, uh, right here, uh, right here, anyways. And, um, it was productive, um, and what we, what the CEO came up with was he, um, he's having the, uh, the property owners come up with a, uh, survey, villania, the wetland, uh, the shoreline zoning.
Right, to make sure they didn't cross it.
Yeah, and, um, so they're going to, going ahead with that. Um, what we talked about was, um, whether or not, um, fines or anything would be, you know, incurred. And, um, the CEO, um, looking at what he sees, right now doesn't see anything with any fines or anything right now. So, um, I think, you know, we ought, I don't, we ought to make a recommendation that we, um, to end this, we, because we have to close this. We're, we're not going to sign the letter that he gave us.
Right, we're not signing that.
He's handling it.
So what we're gonna, what I want to do is make a motion that we negate any fines, um, on the property of Mike Demers and Bill, oh, do you have his name? What's his name?
Uh, S, S, something like that, Celia, Celia?
Sibelli.
Sibelli.
Sibelli. Um, no fines, uh, to anything prior, work done prior to this date.
Right.
Today, January 4th.
As of today.
Going forward, you know, they have to, if they're going to do anything else, they have to come to the CEO. And, um, we're supposed to get back together too, once they get that survey, so that we know exactly where the line is and, and he'll determine, you know?
But what David, and what I'm hearing David say is that regardless of where that line comes back, he wants, he's put a motion on not to do any fines.
From what the CEO and what we had talked about the other night, that we pretty much agree that at this point, because of all the no, unknowns, that we were gonna, um, forego any fines up to this date.
Yep.
So seconded that?
I second that.
Run out if he screws up and then, then that's another story.
Exactly.
So.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed? Eagle Road, Article 43.
All right, so now we have the recommendations, you guys have had the packet for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Ms. Leslie has the missing document, so sounds like we are good once we get our hands on that.
Yeah.
Some of you agree with it?
Wait till next week to make the motion, till we get that paper week?
I mean, you can make the motion, because that way if she's able to get it to me, we can-
Okay, I just want to see the, you know, just want to make sure, I mean, I know she said she's got it.
Well, Ed, it doesn't matter, because Ed had-
Okay, Ed recused, okay then, all right.
Just add that in as part of it, the letter from, it's DEP, right?
Yep, DEP, Amanda Pratt.
So I make a motion, we approve the, um, Article 43, um-
Eagle Road.
Eagle Road, with the, um, paper from DEP, uh, for $3,000.
I second that, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, C, drug policy.
Still on the attorney's hands.
Okay. All right, so we'll move forward to new business, A, GIS service agreement.
Okay, so, so we can get through this without confusing anybody. So, um, you may recall last year, the code enforcement officer came before you guys and he wanted the maps online to start being updated twice a year. Because we pay a flat $2,400 a year, which we budget every year, to have it done once a year. Well, it's a tool that they use so often downstairs, they need it updated more often. Well, when you update things more often, I mean, that's a, you know, you're taking six months worth of work now, instead of a year. You're having to bundle it up, send it over to the assessor, send it to Cartographics. Um, they, we pay, we pay $2,400 a year for that one-year maintenance. And then we pay $3,050 right now for, to do it once a year. That's already budgeted, it's something we've always done. If we go to twice a year, it, they're going to charge you $3,800 a year instead of the $3,050. However, they are offering us a one-time conversion, so currently our data is in what they call AutoCAD. It's in a format that's not real easy to work with, we've been with Cartographics a long time, we need to update, similar to how we updated with Trio to the WebEx. So if we update, pay the one-time fee of $2,400 to update, they will keep, they will update it from two to, two to three times a year for the same $3,050. So it's a, so you're essentially paying for the conversion from the change in data.
Right.
And then they'll allow you to update it almost, you know, he said two to four times a year, so-
That's nice.
I did check with Michelle and because we haven't had to purchase, um, many computers and our, uh, some of our other costs were down in the computer lines, uh, that we have the money to sign the agreement. Um, because we had budgeted, we originally took the $3,050 times two, because we thought it was going to be twice a year, but it was only 38, so we have the difference in there.
Okay.
So, it's, um, our recommendation that you sign the agreement to con, uh, convert the GIS, so that we can get it updated more often, the maps online.
Sounds like a good deal.
And, um, go forward with the same original, $2,400 and $3,050.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the contract with professional GIS conversion service agreement for the town of Acton, Maine.
I'll second that.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed? That'd be nice to have it updated more.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, I mean-
I know, we'll help them down, it's a lot.
We're a busy little town and, you know, there's a lot, um, there's a lot of layers involved, so.
Okay, there you go. All right, moving on, clarification slash warrant finance committee, town employees, minutes.
Kind of put it all in there together. So, um, as we always try to do, we, to keep up with, um, committee meetings, to try to watch them and, and go through and see if there's anything that, that we can do to help. Um, the, I'm going to encourage you guys to watch the, the meeting from January 25th anyways, because I, I feel like that, that you need to see it. They have some concerns that are, um, valid, that, that you need to see and hear some of their concerns. My issue as a town employee, I guess, is, is two things. And I think they say this somewhere in there, that it's a, it's a tough place to be in sometimes, as far as working for the Board of Selectmen, but trying, in, in following policies and procedures, but trying to, I don't want to say appease, but, uh, help the warrant and finance as much as possible. I, I want to play you a clip of about seven or eight minutes of, of a conversation about the town employees and, and who can do what. And, and Michelle and I watched this together today and we need your direction on, on what you want from us. Because currently, because they don't agree with how you guys, guys have it set up, and I'm not here to, to get in the middle of, of who's right or wrong, but we need to know right off the, the get-go from the budget season of what you expect from us. Because you give us one direction and they're, you know, I mean, they've got different thoughts on it, and it's just, it's not a good place to be in for, for her and I. So, currently you have it with any committee, not just this committee, that you have a unwritten procedure that, that essentially says that if anybody on, if somebody on the committee wants something or needs something, the committee takes a vote. And they take a vote that they need, A, B, and C, the request goes to town administrator, we gather whatever the committee chair, we gather, the request has to come from the chair, is what you've delegated in the past, and then we get it back to them. Um, we have situations, I mean, I can give you a half a dozen right off the top of my head of why you guys decided to do this. I mean, we have had, um, you know, we had a situation just last week, uh, two weeks ago with, with the zoning board and attorneys, if you remember that, the circle. Um, we had the, you know, last year, one, at last year, one of the warrant and finance selectmen meeting, selectmen, um, we had somebody present all this information. He did so much work presenting all this information, but you had members on the committee speak up and say, well, I never got it. You know, maybe one of your members did. We had, um, you know, a couple of years ago, we had, we had a prior warrant and finance chair that, um, you know, and another member, and neither one of those people are present, uh, one of them is not even on the committee anymore. You know, had all these concerns with the, the vault and the town records and, and all this, but when it came, gets brought to a public meeting, the other committees are saying, I, you know what I mean, I don't know anything about it. I, you know, so you guys put this into place because you wanted to make sure that if information was requested out of the office, that A, it was only being requested by one person. Because if we have two liaisons to the same department, it's possible that you're both doing a great job and you're going to get the information. We've got a part-time treasurer that, you know, can say, I already gave it to Kim, now I got to give it to David. I mean, we do the same thing here, we don't, you know, with you guys, we try, try to send you all the same thing, so. And, and we've had, we've had this, some situations on the rec, if you remember, so it's not just one committee, I want, I want to make that clear. When you guys put this in place, it was because of a variety of things that we're circling. So as I understand it, as your employee, you want the committees to vote on what they want, to send that request forward to me. We gather the information and we send it by email to the entire committee and the entire Board of Selectmen. And the other piece of that was that, um, in some cases, we've already gotten the information. You know, it's something that, that, you know, they've already gotten a year or two prior, so we might, might already have it, and maybe a new department head or liaison doesn't know that. So they have a, they have a brief conversation in the beginning of the meeting and I don't care what, wait, what, how you guys want to do it, but it is a clear disagreement between the committee and the board, and the treasurer and I just need to know what you want to do. So, and I don't think without listening to this small piece, that you can really get a feel for what their concerns are.
There's no reason, um, why they can't, yep. Um, I guess the next biggest one is, is the town.
He's talking about the $8.
Um, now, who, uh, we, uh, uh, Kim, Tom this year for the selectmen. Um, so I'll work with Kim and the treasurer to bring forward anything that, you know, the committee asked for. Um, you guys can either ask for it tonight, or you can send me an email or whatever, so that we'll have this information at our next meeting. All right, so, does that make sense?
Well, let's review what we went through last year in trying to get information. Um, you will recall, I think, that we made requests, or I made requests, and I got all kinds of emails telling me why we couldn't. Apparently our municipal officers cannot separate their job as municipal officers from being employees, okay? I emailed Michelle with a specific request in February. I got an email back from Jen saying that Michelle had to have permission from the selectmen in order to do that. Now, anybody and his brother can go in and ask that information, that's public information. I got the information, as I said earlier this evening, the night after, or the day after, we wrote it on the articles that that information pertained to. That doesn't fly. The selectmen have no business denying any member of this committee access to our municipal officials, not employees, they're municipal officials, they're responsible for the town meeting. They are employees and in certain areas, they do have responsibilities as employees. But their primary responsibility as an officer is to respond to the town meeting and the other officials of the town meeting. And that goes with respect to legal opinions, it goes with respect to anything having to do with finance up there. So, I think probably, what, what I'm hoping for is that we get this straightened away real fast, that I don't get emails back saying, oh, well, you have to have a vote of this, and then the selectmen have to approve it, and then maybe you'll get it and maybe you won't.
I, I think I have a solution to that, Tom.
Okay, good.
Uh, and it's just me. I'll, I'll, I'll use the, um, the road commissioner, road departments, for example. And if Tom has some questions about the finances or the operations or whatever, of the finances of the road commissioners. I think he goes to the road commissioner and says, this is the information I need, whether it's the finances or whatever it is. And it's up to the road commissioner to give him that information. And the road commissioner, uh, whatever he needs, he will get it, I assume, from the treasurer or whatever, to have a sit-down. And it's kind of like, uh, you, with the fire chief.
Uh, you know what happened last year when, when it came to the attention of the, of the, um, Board of Selectmen, that I had actually gone over and met with the chief in February and had a discussion and a change of, of data?
Yeah.
Remember? Did it, did it, did it, evening, honey?
Evening, honey.
Um, did you ask the chief for that information?
Yeah.
And he told you to go to Michelle?
No, 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 no. I asked specific questions about the operation of fire department, I had about five sheets of paper, uh, questions I had, which, which the chief provided me, and also the explanation of why the tanker needed to be replaced. So we had long discussion, okay? And then apparently the Board of Selectmen was very upset that I had gone to the chief to, to obtain that information. I asked for financials because I was looking for three years in arrears, because I hadn't seen him for three years. Now, this was from, from the treasurer, from the treasurer.
Right.
So you kind of, and, and just for a couple of pieces of clarity, you have to remember back in regards to, one of the warrant and finance members has asked the treasurer the same question for three or four years in a row. And she's gotten a legal opinion, he doesn't like the legal opinion, so when he asks the same question again, she did bring it to you and say, do you want me to answer this, because she's already gotten a legal opinion. So some of these, there's more information to some of it, that Mr., some of Mr. Gore's concerns. But that's, that's not what I'm here to, to talk about. I, we need to know what the procedure is going to be going into this budget season, because it, you know, and I assure you, and, and I would love the opportunity to pull dates and emails, I mean, we would never, I mean, we get this information to them as quick as we can. And we would never sit on anything or hold on anything and, and I don't, you know, some of their comments are hurtful personally, but I'm sure they're not intended that way, but we're not doing this, you know what I mean? But if, if he goes, as one member of the committee, goes to the treasurer and asks for three years' worth, she's been given the instruction by the board, that the chair has to request it, and there has to, you know, the, the committee had to vote that they wanted it. And this all happened, if you go back to January of 2018, the three-hour presentation I had to put on after members of the warrant and finance came forward with concerns that they had, but it was two of the eight members. And we had to spend three hours in a PowerPoint going back through all of these things. So, the treasurer and I want to do whatever we can to help whoever, but at the end of the day, you're our supervisors. So we, but, so we need them to hear what you want and us to get clear direction on how we're to handle, um, committee requests. And just remember, it's a trickle effect.
I would like, um, Ed to be in on this. I would like Ed to be in on this decision.
Yep.
So.
So we can, something to think about. Maybe you guys can watch the whole meeting, because there are other parts of the meeting that you're going to want to hear.
Yeah, and then maybe, you know, next week, we can.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that I did double-check my emails. If you go to the town's website, Warrant Warrant Finance, the January 20th email minutes are there. It's the first thing on the screen. I don't have any other email minutes. So it's, they eventually talk about really that, what's the sense of doing minutes when you're not putting them online anyways? I don't have them, Dennis, just so you know. Maybe we can certainly add them. But the ones that I have are on the line, are online.
Okay. And so they'd like to use.
Yeah, apparently, they've come up with another method, and that's fine. But it's just that, you know, it's a statement that, you know, would have been basically, I'm not doing it. I'm not doing my job.
As of right now, we've got department head usually asks for the information.
Yep. Yeah, they usually, what, have a meeting, they'll decide, and then?
Typically, at any of these meetings, to make sure that everybody's included in the meeting, usually everything is discussed.
Or at least the people present.
This stuff is supposed to be discussed at a meeting, correct? So that means if anybody's got any concerns or anything they're asking for, they should be asked at a meeting. A department head would know that. I don't feel that we're doing anything wrong here. What I did see last year, and not, not with the Finance, but with other committees, is when you have more than one person, you know, you have how many people on some of these committees? Five, six, seven people? And then you have all these people flooding the town administrator and the treasurer for information. Some of the information's overlapping, the next guy, and this and that. It was.
I know.
Bombarded with this stuff.
And one of the committees had quite a few of them coming. So I know that was one of the reasons for the decision.
I think we did that just to make sure that everything was clarified, and they were getting exactly what they needed, and there wasn't anybody going off on their own expedition where they shouldn't be.
Well, let's, um, let's watch that. Give it, you know, like I said, I'd like Ed to look at it, too. I think we should all, you know, figure out what we need. Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you. If you watch the whole meeting.
Yep.
And you take it all in, you'll see the chairman made the comment that last year was last year, this is a new year. There was a lot of things that was against everybody last year, whether it be the COVID, Zoom. It was a very bad year. And I said, what we need to do is look at this year, where all the leaves are green on the tree. And stay that way.
Yep.
And until they turn brown, and we'll see what happens. All right?
Yep.
We were also told by this board that we're supposed to go through our liaison. Okay?
Yep.
Kim, I understand you can't make every meeting for whatever reasons, and that's fine. Liaison wasn't there.
Yes.
So what I said was, doing the municipal part, I was going to talk to Kim, the chairman.
Yeah, I did. I saw that part.
And set up another thing, appointment with Michelle, whatever's convenient for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And bring forward any questions that the committee has, with myself.
Yep.
Okay. I see nothing wrong with that.
There's nothing wrong with that.
No, not at all.
And there's not, but that's different than the direction.
But that's not what's going on here. The other individual seems to think that he can go, he wants to be able to ask the questions himself, too. That's what he did last year.
And, well, and you're holding on. I mean, you guys are saying that.
I told in the meeting that they, and I'll use Will for an example.
Yep.
Tuck as he lays on to the Road Commission.
Yep, so the.
Tuck as should be able to ask Will, as an elected official, about what he's spent for money on stuff, and what he's going to spend money on stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, without bothering the treasurer with it.
Right.
And if Will doesn't know the answer, to save a lot of confusion, the only one that should have to, that would talk to Michelle would be the Road Commissioner, which he does every week. So it was, to me, I thought it was simplifying things.
I haven't watched the whole thing, so that's.
And I, just Dennis, just real clear, I don't agree, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I want, I want to make that clear. What I'm saying is that as their employee, that's not the instruction they're giving me.
But that's what they gave us. We're supposed to go through our liaison.
Well, that's not as I, that's not how I understood it. So I guess we need all of us to figure.
We need Ed here, and we need to figure this out. Yeah, we.
Ted said.
Yeah, right. And it's also been said that all the requests, you know.
Right, we went back and forth.
And whatever way you guys decide, we're fine with. We just need direction from you so that we don't get into these, because.
Right, right. Because we want this to go smooth this year.
Of the meeting the other night, honestly, that I would get a phone call as the chair and had this conversation. But he chose to do it this way, and that's fine, too.
This is the only time I talked to the board.
You have been sent minutes last year, and they were not put on. Whether they got lost in the email.
Yes.
Or they're in Never Never Land, I can't tell you.
So can you tell me which?
But they were.
Which email, which Warrant Finance email would they have come from? Because I can look in the sent box if that person gives me permission. Do you know who sent them? Which member?
Jennifer, you know my incompetence when it comes to.
Okay. So did you send them?
No, I didn't send them.
Okay. Did the secretary send them?
Yes.
Because she sent me some policies, and she did send me a sent a minute. So I'll reach out to her, get permission, and take a look in her sent box. And certainly, if any are in there that we've missed, we'll get them updated.
I thought, again, to simplify things.
Yep.
That we would just use the video.
Yep.
Yep.
But it's the statements that are made about the minutes. If we pull that section up, I mean, you don't just say, for whatever reason, they inadvertently didn't get, get, it's not that. If you re-listen to the section that, when you guys talk about the minutes, it's not as simple, oh, my goodness, maybe it's human error, or maybe somehow they got lost in Never Never Land, like you said. That's not going to mean, that's not, that's not how it's presented. And I'm just saying, we, I try, but I can certainly, I'll reach out to Mrs. Carroll and see if I can look into her sent box. And anything I missed, I will have up by the end.
We all have our faults, Kim.
I'm sorry?
So we all have our faults.
Absolutely.
We always don't come across the way we intend. And, and it's been both ways. And like I said, at the meeting, this is a new year.
Mm-hmm.
I hope for everything to be positive.
Excellent.
And that is my goal.
And, and that's why I brought it up tonight, Dennis, honestly, because I need to know fresh from my port what they expect from me, and what I'm to, you know what I mean, how I deal with the other, the other departments. I need to, you know, I mean, now that it's been brought up, and there's concerns on how it's done last, and I'm, they're the ones that give me direction. I just, just tell me what you want me to do, and I'll take, you know, and I'll do as they say. But if I don't bring it up to ask them, I'm going to assume that we're still basing it on last year's fault, you know, last year's direction.
Right.
But I had to ask them.
I just believe that as Kim was the liaison, that's who I talked to.
Right.
Otherwise.
And if that's how they want to handle it, fine, that's fine.
Okay.
However.
I'm not, I'm not trying to do anything. I'm not trying to.
No, I mean, I know we've, we've told you to talk to your liaisons. I mean, I, I know that. I know we've.
But questions and requests have always gone through the town administrator.
Right, and that's a different, so we'll talk about it, you know, like you said, and we'll figure it out, you know, because we do want to go forward, and we would like this year to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I guess I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion. We go into executive session, personal matter, 405-6-A-1 at 7:06.
Okay, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All approve?
What's that?
Ready? Yep.
Make a motion. We come out of executive session, personal matter, 405-6-A-1 at 7:35.
I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right.
We made decisions.
Go first.
We can make a, we can make a motion to make a pay increase from the transfer station. I'm going to read the letter.
So, well, I'll read the letter first, then I'll make.
Yeah, go ahead. Yep, that's fine.
Without the employee's name.
Excuse me?
Without the employee's name, please.
I'm going to, the department head, I'm allowed to, obviously.
Yeah, sure.
I would like to increase the hourly wages of the following employee at the transfer station. My budget is allowed for this increase. Transfer station attendant moving from fill-in to regular part-time, current rate at $13.50 an hour, proposed rate at 14. And like it states, it's within this year's fiscal budget. So I'd like to make a motion that we increase the transfer station attendance current rate from $13.50 to $14 an hour.
I'll second that. It's moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Go ahead, if you'd like to. So I would like to ask the board to consider increases on the two assistants. This is after consultation with the treasurer, because as you know, we share one of the treasurer, one of the assistants. The, one of the assistants has now been certified in motor vehicles and can be left alone in the building. Thank you. And has also reached another step with the treasurer. So our budget line can also afford the increase. I think that Michelle gave you a paper that says that at the end of the day, you have $762 left.
Yes.
They still work, they work their regular schedule. So this is based on positive reviews, and the office assistant that has picked up the additional duties with the downstairs assistants, the same. So I'm asking for a dollar increase for each of them.
All right. Want to make a motion? I'll make a motion. So we'll make a motion to raise the rates of the two office assistants, one from 15 to 16, and the other one from 16 to 17.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I know that Ed isn't here, but some of the department heads are starting to ask, what, you know, myself included, what increase you'll be, are you, like the COA increase, you know, Social Security, what do you want them to support in their budgets as far as? I mean, last year, they, you know, didn't change anything.
Right.
COVID and not knowing what.
I know. I did want to say, too, you know, where we just did this, you know, no one got their 3% last year. So that's why we're able to.
And it's only because our legislature can, can.
Right, can allow it, right.
That we asked you for. And we will not be asking for increases on ourselves, just so you know, for our needs. So with the budget going forward, what does the board, do you have an idea of what you're looking to support? So pass on to the fire department, the transfer station, all the different projects? Or you want them to just submit, and you'll look at them?
I, I think we'll let them submit.
Okay.
I'm just my opinion. We didn't, we didn't do the increase last year.
No.
Let them submit. Let's see where it comes in. Obviously, if we have any issues, we can.
Work on it from there.
I think most of them are, other than one change, most of them are just probably going to 3%.
3%, right, yeah.
I'll see what the board and we'll find.
All right. All right. Land use hourly clarification, rate clarification.
Yes, last week, we asked to look into, I gave you guys some, some documents that the July of 19, when the individual was given the promotion, the additional duties, she went from 14 to 15, that date, and I think you met with the department head.
We did.
I was not present for that. So you met with the department head, and there was a conversation that at the end of six months, you would reevaluate. I pulled the minutes to watch the tape from that next appointment. There was no increase. I don't know if the department head came back, take it from there, even.
Yeah, so when we, we discussed it there, we thought there was an increase that was promised. And come to find out, what happened was, the, the department head was supposed to come to us in six months.
Six months later, let us know how she was progressing, and then, and then, and then that.
Or if one was.
Right, and then we would have, you know, gone with the raise.
So.
But he didn't, but he didn't, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we had talked about it, but he did not come back and talk to us.
So the, the increase we gave last week stands, though, it was effective last week.
Yes, yep.
Yeah. So we got a, make a correction to the motion last week. From a $2, $2 increase takes effect last Wednesday, January 20th, with no retro, as no vote was taken in 2020 to increase because supervisor never came forward.
Right.
That's why I was doing my.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a little confusion there. Just had to clarify that.
Is that a motion? Yes, I do. So I'll second that. It's moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right. All right, public comment. Good evening.
I'm just curious, you made the appointments to the Capitol Improvement Committee recently.
Mm-hmm.
Have you developed a set of guidelines, your responsibilities?
I have a book.
For the.
Michelle worked on.
Improvement Committee.
Yep.
And when can we look forward to seeing this?
When do you guys want to meet?
We need to get everybody sworn in, too.
Yeah. So can we get everybody sworn in next week? And then we could?
I have.
Oh, okay. Oh, you just have to come in. Because it would be nice to get going, you know, and have a meeting within the next few weeks or so. And, yeah, I worked with Michelle, and she, I, one of the binders she gave me, I liked. So I'll, I'll have her makeup, and I'll bring it in, and tell her that's the one I picked, and have them made up for us.
So, good idea.
Does that work?
So this is not true.
So, yeah. So, yeah.
It's going to give us some, you know, some.
Right, yeah, it does. It's, it, yeah.
And hopefully, we can move forward with this.
Yeah.
Committee.
So get yourselves sworn in, and.
Everyone I can pull them, and I can pull in, if they want, that's for them to carry on schedule.
All right, that would be good. And then, once that's done, we'll set a meeting up.
You're going to be the chair.
Come on.
Everybody is looking at you as being the chair anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Do we have any announcements?
No, we've been posting them on the website. The Zoom meetings are on there. We were allowed, this meeting one more time to be a Zoom, so all those slints are on there.
We're meeting tomorrow at 5:00.
Yeah, I still want in the job post.
Yep.
So.
All right.
I think we decided to keep that, we'll actually hire somebody, because.
I think it's a good idea.
Just in case we don't find the guy or girl or whatever, that we still have it open.
It'd be nice to have more choices, too. Well, I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion with Jen.
All right, I'll second that. Everybody, have a good evening.
Jen?